Mr. Carradi, will you please say the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Eminence. Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook. Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
We have seven members present.
We have four presentations tonight, and I would like to make the first one. The first one is for the Lincoln PTO. I always like to do these, being a former PTO president, I love to see them recognized. Earlier this month, the Board accepted a donation of $4,000 from the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School PTO to help with the purchase of new desks and chairs for the Lincoln Library. The total cost of the new furniture was over $9,700, so this donation covered nearly half of the purchase. We are extremely grateful for this generous donation, and we know how hard the membership had to work to be able to donate such a large amount of money toward this purchase, which will help the library a more functional, steam-based space. With us this evening is PTO Secretary Aima Matia. I would invite her to join me at the front of the room so we can present the PTO with a certificate of appreciation for this wonderful donation. Will the audience please join me in thanking the Lincoln PTO for their generosity? I would also like to mention that if you recall, the Lincoln PTO earlier this school year purchased a new curtain for the Lincoln stage, so this donation for another large improvement to the school is greatly appreciated. And now to the second presentation. Later this evening, the Board will accept a donation from the Bethel Park High School Soccer Boosters for 88 boys and girls soccer bags valued at $3,045. We are extremely appreciative of this donation, as we have been of all of the Soccer Booster donations over the years, which have included clothing, equipment, and field lighting. The ongoing partnerships we have with organizations such as the Bethel Park Soccer Boosters and our PTO/PTA organizations are great examples of how supportive our community is of our students and embodies the extreme sense of pride in our community has for its children. As I just told the PTO, I know how much work went into raising the funds for these items. We want the Soccer Boosters to know how genuinely appreciative we are of their generosity. With us this evening are Soccer Booster President Mike Mathias and Vice President Steve Minnick. At this time, we would like both gentlemen to join me up front and to also receive a certificate of appreciation from the Board in recognition of your latest generous donation to our boys and girls soccer teams. Will the audience please join me in a round of applause for the Bethel Park High School Boys and Girls Soccer Boosters? the Black Hawk Family Relief Fund, which will be used to cover outstanding cafeteria balances for students who qualified for the reduced lunch program during the 2018-19 school year. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with this group, the Black Hawk Family Relief Fund is a community-based organization made up completely of volunteers. The group's mission is to provide support and assistance to Bethel Park families who are facing unexpected hardships and catastrophic events. In the past, the Black Hawk Family Relief Fund has provided financial assistance to families dealing with major medical events, as well as a coordinated flood relief effort in the community. Serving as president of this wonderful community partner is Bethel Park High School Schoolgirls Lacrosse Coach Becky Luzier. Unfortunately, Becky is unable to be with us this evening, but joining us is Chris Van Dyke, an at-large member of the organization's Board of Directors. At this time, I would like to invite Chris to join me up front to receive a certificate of appreciation from the Board on behalf of all the families who benefited from this generous donation. Again, will all of you please applaud the Black Hawk Family Relief Fund? Our final presentation tonight is one, if the truth be told, I would prefer not to do because we are saying goodbye as well as thank you, and it's the goodbye part that I don't like. For the past two years, Bethel Park Detective Joelle Dixon has served as our district's school resource officer, and to say that she has been a valuable member of our school safety team doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of her contributions. Among her many accomplishments, Detective Dixon helped to oversee the creation of our school police force and was a daily presence in our schools, helping with investigations and serving as another friendly face for our students when they needed to share a concern with the responsible adult. She has been a trusted advisor to our administrative team, helping to make recommendations to enhance and improve the safety of all of our schools and our crisis response procedures. She took the lead in coordinating the inter-agency reunification drill we held at the community center in June to familiarize our staff with what to do in the event of an emergency that requires parents to be reunited with their children at a lost site location. In addition to serving as our school resource officer, Detective Dixon has been a police pal at the elementary level and has served as a member of our crisis prevention and management committee, helping to transition the ALIS program into our schools in 2015. She is a 10-year member of the Bethel Park Police Force, and the good news is she will continue to serve the community in that capacity, but her presence will definitely be missed at the school district on a daily basis. Detective Dixon, we thank you for your commitment to make the Bethel Park School District a better and safer place for our students and staff. We thank you so much for your willingness to serve as a school resource officer for these past two years, and at this time, I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation and recognition of your valuable contribution to the Bethel Park School District. It's also exciting to know that Joelle is a former Bethel Park student and a graduate, and I've known her since she's been a youngster, and I'm really proud of her, you know, that all the work she's done. Joelle, please come forward.
I just want to say thank you. It's been an honor to work with everybody. You've got very hardworking staff here, and everyone works diligently every day to make sure this is a school safer and efficient every day, and you are a great hand for a great school police officer, and you've got a great staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we intend to adopt the agenda for business items.
Shall I move?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to call a point of privilege. I'd like to ask the solicitor, as an individual Board member, it's my understanding none of us have any inherent right to direct the superintendent or any of the staff to do anything, correct?
Well, the Board acts as a board, not as individual, so the superintendent, what's under the majority of the Board.
So with that said, it would take a vote of five people?
Mr. Nagel, could you speak out my turn while I'm here?
Okay, so with that said, it would take a vote of five Board members to prevent the superintendent from providing information, correct?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking. I mean, providing information that the whole Board wanted, or?
If a Board member asked for information-
Right.
-and the superintendent was working on complying, could any Board member direct the superintendent not to provide that information?
Well, generally, I mean, so you have to start with the original question of, can one Board member direct the superintendent to gather, you know, information? And that generally, you know, if the Board wants that information, then the Board can ask for that information. If one Board member is saying to the superintendent, "I want you to take your time as superintendent to get up," you know, I don't know what was asked for, or who asked for it.
Okay.
But if there was information that was asked, but the entire Board says, "Look, this isn't what, you know, this isn't information that we want," it starts with that question.
To clarify, as a point of privilege.
Okay.
I asked for information from the superintendent from different departments by email. The superintendent, at his discretion, said, reached out to me and said that he was working on gathering the information. After that, he was directed by a Board member not to provide the information unless five people said to. There was never a vote saying not to. The superintendent is the executive. He was working on gathering that information at his discretion and was directed not to provide it. Is that allowed?
Generally, I'm going to say that it's the initial question that I would say one person asking the superintendent to gather individual information from them is what requires the entire Board to say, "This is the information that we want," as a Board to look at and take.
So I need to, anytime I ask the superintendent a question, I need to ask for a vote?
Well-
Well, I'd like to call that vote.
Well, in order to call that vote, the agenda requires-
I did ask for it to be put on the agenda. That's why I'm calling the point of privilege to adopt-
Ma'am, we have a motion to adopt the agenda right now.
Yeah, right now, there's a motion on the table to adopt the agenda.
And I'm calling a point of privilege because I asked this to be put on the agenda. I don't want to talk about this.
Would Mr. Nagel like to file an amendment to the agenda?
The, your policy requires that if, that if there is something that is to be on the agenda, it had to have been on the work session agenda. So that's what your policy says, that you're not, that things don't just go on the agenda unless there isn't an emergency situation, and then that goes out from, that the superintendent wants to put on the agenda, that, and that goes out to you as a Board in advance.
I believe the work session agenda was blank. During our committee meeting, there was a lot of blank spaces on the agenda that were added. Under curriculum, it was completely blank. I believe under personnel, it was completely blank. So our committee meeting agenda, there have been things added since.
I know, and that was provided to you, that was provided to you, information from the superintendent was provided to you in advance per your policy. If you want a motion added to the agenda, then you would make that motion to add something to the agenda, and that requires a majority of the Board members to add that to a Board agenda.
So I would do that now?
Well, it should have been, I mean, as a point of order, this motion's already on the table. So it should have been done before the, this motion was made.
He can still amend the-
You can amend, you can amend the-
Amend the motion that's on the floor right now.
Well, I'd like to amend the motion to add to the agenda a vote on whether or not I and a few other Board members who have requested or shown interest in this information should be provided that information.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments about the amendment?
Yes, I have a-
That I'll be voting on first, the amendment.
I have a question.
Just a minute, Mrs. Buckley has one first.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Buckley?
I have a question. Explain to me in a brief statement what the amendment is and basically in first thing, what it is.
We are placing, we are being asked to place as an amendment, a motion on the floor to be able to place a motion on the agenda to obtain the information that Mr. Nagel and some of the Board members are seeking to vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
So you're, you, this vote, Ms. Buckley, will be a vote of whether or not you want to amend the motion, amend the agenda?
Mr. Means.
Yes, the request, does that need to be documented exactly what he's requesting? I don't believe he's asking for an open-ended request.
I will be happy to state the questions I asked the different departments. Mr. Keith is facilities director.
I don't, I don't think we need that.
A list of each voting and its age, use, number of classrooms, utility of classrooms, major components, age, and life expectancy, and short and long-term problems or goals. Annual energy consumption and cost per voting. A list of components or systems that may qualify for energy rebates. Long-term and short-term recommended required projects and estimated costs. Roughness, and it's will be sufficient. A copy of the strategic facilities plan that one director insists that we have. Mrs. O'Rourke and Mrs. Wells, students and curriculum. Recommended class sizes by grade level. Recommendation for achieving parity at elementary levels. Specific recommendations of goals, materials, curriculum, and methods to improve our district's education in delivery and outcomes, and things under your scope that are working well and should be maintained or supplemented. Mrs. Sutton, Director of Special Education. A building-by-building list of staffing needs versus staffing levels for pairs and special education teachers. Please include full-time versus part-time. A list of tools and resources that you believe you require to identify and meet the needs of our special needs population. An itemized list of social and psychological resources per grade and whether they are provided as needed or to the general student population. For instance, do our contracted social workers provide classes or programs on coping or peer pressure to our elementary students? An overall assessment of our gifted program and any recommendations for improvement. Things under your scope that are working well and should be maintained or supplemented. Our SPOs, this, of course, will remain confidential. A general assessment of our facilities and grounds and any recommended physical or software upgrades for security purposes. Recommended training or human resources to augment our team already in place. These are the requests that I made on July 30th that the superintendent told me that him and his administration were working. Again, I did not direct him, I requested him. That should be within his discretion as our executive to provide, and if he decides not to provide it, then it should be up to us to cast a vote on whether or not it should be provided. He was denied the ability to provide that, and I'm asking for that vote right now to provide this information.
Could you hear all that, Mr. Buckley?
Firstly, no, I have one more question with Richard Samuel, a candidate. If I vote for this particular amendment tonight, right now, that means that any Board member has one person demand to have something put on the agenda.
No, it's just a particular amendment for this.
Otherwise, I would just say that five votes must be included, please put on the agenda.
So no, your, your policy allows a Board member to ask at your voting meeting for something to be added to the agenda. However, your policy recognizes that your work session is, you know, is the time to discuss your general issues, so it does allow for a Board member to ask for something to be put on the agenda, but it requires a majority vote in order to include that on an agenda that is brought up on the floor the night of a motion, the night of a, of a regular voting meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Maybe we could just talk a little bit about the purpose for this. It isn't just information for the sake of information, but I think it's critical to begin thinking about what is our long-term, you know, operational expenses, what are our long-term commitments that we have to make in light of a new budget and especially revenue reality that we're living in. So this is stuff that we should have started on June 26th or 7th of forming a committee to collect this kind of information and map out a long-term budget structure on how we're going to deal with this in the future. Some of the things that we have to consider have long-term implications, takes multiple years to address, and we need to be out in front of this. So I think the information is very valid to putting together a long-term financial picture, and that's why I support it.
I, I have a problem with this request because, first, it is voluminous, we are trying to get schools started and on the way. Secondly, we have a fairly brand-new Board coming on, majority of the Board, in December. That's when all of our information should be ready for them as a new Board to start setting the strategic direction. Using our time for the people that are left for the next two meetings, two or three meetings, it should be the new people. Secondly, all of this information is housed in different areas, and it will take some time to collect it. Secondly, you need to spell out what your report should look like, what your goal, what are you attempting to do, and what components do you need, and how do you get all of those components? Just gathering information here and there is just going to give you more sheets of like what we got all the time. You need something in a format that, first of all, all the new people will understand, and also you in the audience. Half the time we get these sheets, I, I have the floor, half the time we get these sheets, and there are a multitude of questions and clarification because Board members do not understand them. So we need to get this information. I have the floor, and if this continues, I'm going to have to ask you to be removed. I mean it. So when we get this information, we need to have it in a usable format so that we're not wasting all of the administrators' time. No one is saying they can't have it, we're just saying in what format you should get it, and you need time to properly get the correct information. That's my only, I've worked for many companies and many Boards, and believe me, if you want to use your time wisely, because we may have to work with another firm, a firm, to put this in the format for what we need.
With all due respect, Mrs. Ruhl, I've asked for much of this information over the course of the last almost two years now, and I am asking for it so I can make more informed decisions as my role as a school director. I am fairly specific in what I'm asking our professionals to provide, as their departments dictate, is their professional recommendations, so that I have a better understanding when recommendations are brought to me, the impact of my votes. That's why I'm asking, I stated that in the email that I wrote. I also emailed the request to all Board members, all Board members were CC, asking this to be put on the agenda for a vote. This is not the first time I've been denied information. This has been made public. Several Board members have said publicly that I couldn't have information unless I had five votes, so here I am asking for-
Let me tell you why, why that policy came.
It doesn't matter.
I mean, you're saying that we didn't, but let me tell you why the policy came about, Ken.
Mr. Nagel, you've had the opportunity to speak, she has the opportunity to speak. Point of order, I mean, you know, you all have the opportunity to discuss, so.
First, I need information, I don't need to talk all night about it.
But everybody's allowed to provide their opinion and their reason for their vote.
The reason that policy came into place is because at one time, before I even got on the Board, Board members would ask for a lot of information like you, and the administrators found they were working for one Board member. That is not correct. You cannot, taxpayers nor anyone want to spend their time in the wrong direction. So if you have more, if you have a majority of the Board that feels that that's necessary information, then that's the way it works. That's why the policy was put in place. I had nothing to do with it.
And that's why I'm calling the vote on whether or not I have a majority.
So you're now, you're now voting on whether or not you want to amend the agenda, amend the motion to adopt the agenda to include this motion, um-
This amendment.
This motion.
I'd like to make a comment.
You're not voting on the motion, you're voting on whether or not to amend.
Before we vote, I would like to make a comment, to be first of all clear for the public to understand that when you can ask for information, a lot of times you do get it, so just to be clear, we all do get information, but there is a proper procedure, policy, like was just explained by our solicitor. The vote, the vote was already taken when you did submit the email, you, everybody, nobody said we wanted it. I mean, not nobody, I mean you and maybe a couple, one or two others maybe, but, so the vote was already taken. Now, you want to do it publicly, that's fine, let it be known that you were requesting all this information. I personally looked at the details of what you were asking, and I personally did not find it to be beneficial because I think that we have an administration that does do a lot of good stuff, it does take away a lot of time. I didn't see any direction. It was just all of a sudden, I want, there's all this stuff that's being requested, but there was no plan to say how this was going to be applied and why do we need that information specifically. So at the time, when it was being requested, do we want it on the agenda? I did not personally see any value at that point. I mean, there's some things in there that's interesting, it is good, I say that, I agree, but as a whole, I, I'm voting against it, so that's my sentence.
Mr. Workmeister, you stated that the vote was already taken. Wouldn't that be a violation of the open meetings act, Ms. Andrews?
Mr. Nagel, I mean, when things are being put on the agenda-
It's agenda.
You know, it is a discussion that you, that you have, that if you send an email saying, "I want all this information," and five people don't say, "Yes, we all want it," then, you know, I mean, we don't put- five people don't say, "Yes, we all want it," then, you know, I mean, we don't put every, everything that happens isn't on the agenda. I don't see it as a violation of any open records, but you have the motion on the agenda, so.
So the absence of a vote constitutes a vote?
Mr. Nagel, it's on the agenda.
Trish, I have a question for you. If we vote not to put it on the agenda, then it can just be put on the agenda next week, right?
It could be put on the agenda next month.
If we put it on the agenda and take a vote, then can it be put on the agenda again or once it's voted upon, is it done?
No, even if you vote, I mean, if you vote yes for it, then it's done. If you put it on the agenda and you vote no, then it can be brought up again at another meeting.
Okay, because some bodies have rules that you can't vote on. Once a vote's taken, you can't re-vote on it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the most interesting thing about this is that the reason for these questions are because of a vote that was taken in June to decrease the age. We can't go forward without this information. We can't go forward without this information. And you know what? That list of questions is minor compared to the questions we need to ask. We need to ask about 100 more questions, and we have to have a long-range plan. This is just the beginning. To say no to these few questions is absurd.
I would say that the timing is actually important to get started now. Yeah, it'll take some effort to put these numbers together, but our budget planning process starts in what, January, early February? It's important to have this information if, because I expect some big changes coming in next year's budget. We've got to have answers to a lot of these questions, start working on them now.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I feel some of the questions are inappropriate. I feel very uncomfortable with ones digging into the Paris. I think you're getting very, very close to FERPA restrictions, and I also think it's inappropriate to be asking our staff members about setting class sizes. That's the obligation of the board, and we've had recommendations from Dr. Pascarella already.
So again, just for a reminder, you're voting right now on whether or not to amend the motion.
You're voting on the amendment.
Now, we're voting to amend the motion.
May as well take a roll call vote.
Yes. We're going to have a roll call.
Mrs. Buckley?
I vote no, and I think we should follow the existing policy that requires five votes taken.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
No.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mr. Workmeister?
No.
So the amendment failed, so now you're voting back on just the intent to adopt the agenda as presented. Okay, and that motion was made by Ms. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Means, so that that motion goes back on the table to be voted on.
Okay.
So the intent to adopt the agenda for business items as it's presented.
I'd like that roll call that also.
Okay.
Mrs. Buckley?
Mrs. Buckley, you're voting on whether or not to adopt the intent to adopt the agenda as it was originally presented.
Thank you.
And you were called for a vote.
Oh, excuse me, I just voted for a vote. I voted yes.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mrs. Dobus?
No.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion passes as stated. Now, we have approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes of June 25, 2019, business meeting minutes of August 6, 2019, announcement of executive session, August 6, 2019, for personnel and other legal matters and to receive information, August 27, 2019, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information.
Okay, we need to go back to approve the minutes, and so we actually need a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
Vote no.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated. Now, we'll have our staff reports, student government.
It is my pleasure to present a few brief items of good news that happened over the summer and to alert you of some important upcoming events. The 2019-2020 school year got off to a great start. Our teachers returned to school on Friday, August 16, and during our opening in-service activities, they learned about this year's vision, digging deeper for student achievement. This vision continues to build upon the themes from our previous three school years, and this year, we are focusing on each of our schools and asking them to develop what we are calling SMART goals in our four focus areas: project-based learning, student supports, reflective teaching, and family engagement. SMART is an acronym for Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Relevant, and Timely. Each school has been tasked with identifying what they specifically want to achieve this school year in these four areas and to provide honest and detailed assessments of what worked well and what they need to do to improve. We will be incorporating evidence-based practices in our classrooms, which are scientifically tried and tested educational strategies to not only increase student engagement, but to also increase student output and achievement. While each school's goals may not be the same as the other schools, we are requiring continuity district-wide when it comes to achievement. Our principals will be meeting regularly throughout the school year to discuss progress on their goals and to share with one another things that are working in their buildings. We look forward to digging deeper together for a high-achieving school year. For the third consecutive year, we were approached by WPXI, Channel 11, to be part of their back-to-school series of stories. This year, they asked us to focus on bus safety, and we were more than happy to participate in this story, which ran yesterday morning during the morning news. The focus was on our bus camera systems that enable our drivers to capture the license plate numbers of vehicles that pass school buses when the stop arm is extended and students are getting on and off the buses. Did you know that since we began this program on March of 2018, we have turned in 110 motorists to the Bethel Park Police Department, and 67 of them have been convicted and fined for over $8,600 for violating the bus stop arm law? We want to thank Transportation Director Scott Zeiler and Bus Driver Michelle Walltower for doing a great job of demonstrating how the cameras work to keep our students safe. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School sophomore Haley Bell, who earned a gold medal in the Environmental Ambassador Event at the Family Career and Community Leaders of America's National Conference in Anaheim, California, in July. Haley's project involved creating a campaign to encourage Bethel Park homeowners to transform their old trash cans into environmentally friendly rain barrels rather than discarding the cans into the landfill. Great job, Haley. Two members of the Bethel Park High School Forensics Team had successful competitions at the National Speech and Debate Association's Grand National Tournament in Dallas in June. Christian McLean advanced to the quarterfinals and served as the presiding officer of the Congress event. Caleb Shook advanced six rounds in the extemporaneous event and was a member of the five-student Pittsburgh Region World Schools Gold Team, which went 4-2 at Worlds. The World Schools Gold Team was coached by Bethel Park High School Forensics Team sponsor, Christine Robb, who was also selected to serve as a judge in the final round judge pool at the Grand National Tournament. This competition is the largest academic competition in the world, and according to the National Speech and Debate Association, selection as a final round adjudicator is one of the highest honors at the national tournament. Congratulations to Christian, Caleb, and Ms. Robb, and good luck to the forensics team this year. Student, staff, and visitors to Independence Middle School are now greeted with new outside signage installed above the cafeteria window. Thanks to art teacher Cara Whitaker for sharing her design talents, head custodian Bill Reneger for overseeing the installation, and to principal David Minch for making the project possible. The signage looks great. Thanks to the generous support of the Bethel Park community, $17,595.55 was raised through two fundraising events this summer for the Bethel Park Fantastic Four charities. The events were a golf outing and a special dinner at Eleven Restaurant in the Strip District. Eveningly splitting the proceeds from these two events are the Bethel Park Education Foundation, the Bethel Park Community Foundation, the Bethel Park Public Library, and the Bethel Park Historical Society. These four organizations do so much for Bethel Park. The Bethel Park School District is once again proud to receive funding for another year of the Pre-K Counts Grant, which will provide 17 income-eligible four-year-olds the opportunity to receive free preschool education at Tender Care Learning Center. This grant is designed to help students to be ready to succeed in kindergarten, and I am pleased to report that all 17 slots are filled for this school year. Homecoming is just around the corner. Please mark your calendars and plan to come out and enjoy this great Bethel Park community tradition. Homecoming Week literally kicks off on Sunday, September 22, with the annual Powderpuff Football Game between the senior and junior girls at the stadium at 6:00 p.m. I'm also happy to report that the Homecoming Parade has been rerouted back to its former starting location in the St. Valentine's Church parking lot and will proceed down Broad Street and end at the stadium. The parade will begin at 6:00 p.m. on Friday, September 27, followed by tailgate activities in the parking lot and around the front of the high school. The Homecoming Football Game against Moon will begin at 7:30 p.m. Please be in your seats early for the presentation of the Homecoming Awards before kickoff, and stay seated for the presentation of the Homecoming Court and the crowning of the King, Queen, Prince, and Princess at halftime. This year's theme is Old Hollywood, and you're all invited to come and celebrate with the students. We'll see you at Homecoming 2019. We're excited about this new school year and to sharing more items of good news with you every month during the year. For now, this concludes our report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christian McLean. I am one of the returning Student Government Association School Board Representatives from the high school. I look forward to a really good year in SGA this year. I think we had a really successful year last year with all the things we implemented, the charging stations in the school, the water bottle filling stations on each floor, and I think that all of our main events, our staff app week and all the holidays, are really successful, so I'm really looking forward to another great year.
Hi, I'm Lamy Clark. I'm this year's newest school board representative, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, I have none.
Okay, now, now, PTA and PTO? Now we'll go to the committee reports. Mrs. Buckley, were you at the Pathfinder this time?
No, I was not, but I had a report prepared with my name.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that it was a great opening of the 2019-2020 school year, and as you know, there are five owning districts of the Pathfinder School. The incentive charter, we are one of the five. I do want to remind you, though, that it does not limit to children, but it can be wonderful programs there. It's open up to many kids and to teach the differences if you're an owning district, that your tuition rate is different than the tuition rate paid by the non-owning district. At the very unusual setup that was created years ago, the most important thing is all children's benefit. And I personally would like to thank the hard-working administrators, staff, and educators who provide for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobus, surrogation?
A couple of different things from the rec department. The rec department is sponsoring a turkey trot on Thanksgiving Day. It will start up near Washington School on the Montour Trail, so if you want to get in a good run or a walk before you eat your turkey, sign up for the turkey trot. Also, a couple of challenge grants were given out through the recreation department this year. It's going to continue to be a tradition, so stay, if you're in a recreation sports league and you're looking to make some improvements for next year, keep that in mind. The grants will become available probably at the beginning of the year. And last of all, there's a Bethel Park Community Day on Saturday, September 21, that everyone is invited to.
Thank you.
Community Day's on the 14th, isn't it?
The 14th, the 14th, I'm sorry. 14th, okay, good. I have a report from the AIU. We're starting our executive director search again. Hopefully, we will be able to bring on a new director, we're hoping by January, February. We heard about their security facility maintenance work plan, their building, and I was 50 years old, and they needed to look at updating some things, especially in security. They discussed remake learning, and they also talked about some school concerns, and it was interesting. Generally, we're talking about educational issues, and this time, we had a couple of the high-profile schools want to know how we were going to address mean children in the classroom. And I said, "You mean bullying?" They said, "No, mean children." And it's sad that this has to be something that's even on our agenda to even think about. So social media, apparently, and some other issues are really playing a role and is starting to take a toll in our lower grades in middle school. So when you have 13 school districts in a meeting talking, there's something wrong there. Now, the other exciting news that I have is still center. We have 100 more students this year than we've ever had. We've introduced four new programs starting next September of 2020. They will be the Rehabilitation Aid, Health Assistance, Healthcare Technology, and the Vet Technology Program. That one I'm most excited about because that is going to bring even some revenue into the school. We're also going to increase more emphasis on entrepreneurship, because as you know, students who take the trades can come right out of that school, and they can actually start their own business, a lot of them. And the other thing we are looking at is possibly looking at maybe starting some of the courses. This isn't on the agenda for next year, but maybe the year after, start in ninth grade so that our students can get a more detailed certification, that they would have to go on to another school and pay. This way, they would get them leaving high school. So I'm all excited about that. Excited to be a part of that. That school is 42 years old, and we are so fortunate because we're now entering a new part of education that is totally different. The kids can do so many things and so much with the technology, and that we need to look at how we can update the classes in that school, and it's probably coming at a good time because education is changing so much. But the exciting part about that is that school sits on 55 acres of land. People would never know that. You just see that school in the Moone Valley, but all the acreage behind it. We could actually be a regional campus vocational school at some point where we could offer all of education, because they've done that in the center part of Pennsylvania. So that is perfect property to think about maybe within the next five to 10 years. So that's the exciting news that I have, anyway. So we're ready now to go to public comments on the agenda. Please state your name and address, and you have two minutes. Anyone? Okay. All right, Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening on tonight's agenda. Would anyone like any of those held out? During none, I move item number one, sponsored school overnight educational activities, which includes Part A, PMEA Region Course at Hickory High School in Carnegie P.A., February 26 to 28, 2020. Item number two, oh, excuse me, this is still part of number one, I apologize. PMEA All-Face Conference and Festival at the Kalari Rose Resort in the Pocono Manor in Pennsylvania, April 26, 27 to the 26, 2020. Number three, Festival of Music/ Music Department Competition in Orlando, Florida, April 30 to April 4, 2020. Number two, Wonders, Finals, Disney Purchases. And number three, Independent Study.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, since my request had to do with curriculum, I'd like to read this. Leonard Garazi, writing, their compliance officer, I hereby requesting all documentation in Bethel Park School District's possession pertaining to my July 30...
Point of order. We have an agenda. That's not part of the agenda.
Solicitor, please.
Mr. Nagel, just a moment, the solicitor. Your right-to-know requests should be made in writing on the right-to-know form that we have, that the right-to-know officer has, so that should be provided.
Mr. Nagel, you're out of order. Mr. Nagel, you're out of order.
...possession between officials and/or employees of the agency.
All ready for the vote? Roll call, please.
This is also to ensure all replies charged or dated to my questions by district employees, whether complete or incomplete. The date shall commence July 30, 2019, and conclude upon fulfillment of this right-to-know request. Emails to be included and accepted from this request.
I'd like to make a motion to censor Mr. Nagel. It doesn't have any legal... No, wait, 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 wait. We follow Robert's Rules of Orders. You can take a vote to censor. A vote to censor doesn't have any legal obligation, but it does express the board's displeasure with Mr. Nagel's disruption.
You can make the motion and take a vote, but there's no authority to censor any board member.
What's that?
There's no authority to...
Robert's Rules of Order. We follow Robert's Rules of Orders. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
The motion fails.
Okay, I have a, I have a, I have a question about the Wonders-
Listen, listen, wait, we, we called for-
Mr. Means, the rules of the courtroom went out the window on June 25th.
Mr. Nagel, we call for the vote. Mr. Carrazzi, will you please?
We need to maintain order, please. Mr. Carrazzi, if you can call the vote.
What are we voting on?
Call, your roll call vote on items one, two, and three.
Wait, I have a question about number two.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, how many teams are there in fifth grade, or how many teams are now piloting this Wonders program? Like, it seems like, I didn't know there were more, how many, I guess there are lots of teams in fifth grade?
There are quite a few teams, because, I'll let Ms. Wells, if you wanted to speak directly.
There are currently six teams in sixth grade.
In fifth grade?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. And so four of them will now be piloting the Wonders material for the 1920 school year, including two of the co-teaching teams.
And for the public's-
Co-teaching, meaning?
Where students are included in the classroom, and so there will be a special education teacher in that classroom during that English ELA period.
With the Wonders program?
Correct, because it's a multi-tiered resource that comes with tier-two and tier-three interventions, so that they're leveled for students at different levels.
Okay, so all of the teams except for two, then, are piloting it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And one other question. So this is the same program now from first grade through fifth grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, too.
It's a blend.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrazzi, call for the vote.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries as stated. Mrs. Dobis, will you please take personnel?
Sure. Personnel has one, two, five-
Six, I think, with a bunch of parts.
Six items under personnel. Anybody want any of them held out? No, then I move one through six.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to comment on that.
Just a moment, Mrs. Buckley?
Yes, yes.
You have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This is just a point of clarification, often, not just tonight, there are many personnel items that are quite lengthy, and people have certain parts to be held out. I respect that. But if possible, number one is, could be moved to Catch Home, number one. But number two, and I know this is going to be timed accordingly, but this is for clarifying for the board, as well as for the members of the audience, could we please move to A, which is classified, number one? Then that goes on to number two, which goes on to fill-in. Then move to number three, A, because part of this section on the agenda is overwhelming, and if someone says, "I want to hold side C, M2, LR," it's impossible to track all of that. If we could do it one at a time, then we will have more information that everyone's here. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we just already seconded the motion to approve one through six.
She probably didn't hear you. Cindy, there were no questions, surprise this time, but you are right, that is the appropriate way to handle it, and we should handle them going forward that way. But no, we didn't have any questions this time.
I apologize.
That's all right. Yes.
Taxpayers, too. I mean, we're sitting in the audience spending their time, they need more information, and this is the time to do it. And I'm not saying to discuss the board session or whatever they sell it was, I'm talking about providing it in an orderly fashion that makes sense to all. There's very lovely people at Holland who will want this topic to be and not have an agenda for this.
I, yeah, I agree with you. So we're going to now have the vote and the roll call. We're ready.
I'd like to make a comment real quick, if I may.
Could we just finish the roll call and get this motion?
Well, no.
No, it's just a discussion.
Are you going to comment on this?
Okay.
I'm making a comment on this. As many of you know, I've requested information pertaining to the parent needs versus the staffing levels. Last meeting, last voting meeting, I expressed that Dr. Pasquarella assured us that it would be coming. This voting meeting, we did receive that information, so I just wanted to get, let you guys all know what was going on, because as they said, surprise, nothing was held out this time.
I have a comment, then.
Yeah.
I'd like to make the comment that a couple of months ago, Dr. Pasquarella, in the executive session, brought out a piece of paper telling us how many part-time, how many full-time parents we had throughout the district, and that information was given previously. So I'd just like to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay, we are now ready for the votes?
No, I would, I would like to contradict that. He showed us that he had it at the last voting meeting and stated that he would provide it to us for this voting meeting. There's a, there's a significant distinction.
We were given the number of part-time and full-time parents. If you can't remember it, I can't help that, but we were given that information.
I don't remember it. But anyway, regarding Cindy's comment, in regard to the agenda, Cindy, I don't think that we even provide enough information for the public's agenda for them to know what we're voting on anyway, just as a point of clarification, so.
Okay, we're ready for the roll call now. Mr. Carrazzi?
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion carries, pass as stated. Facilities and Services, Mr. Workmeister?
Yes, Mrs. Rule, we have three items under Facility and Services, but anybody like any of them held up? Okay, hearing none. The first one is approval of the proposal for consulting geotechnical engineering services for the slope monitoring and slope inclinometer installation at IMS. Number two, purchase of floor scrubbers. Number three, rotor tiller for ground screw.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion passes as stated. Finance Committee, Mr. Christensen, would you please take that tonight?
Sure. There are 11 items on the agenda. Does anybody want any held out?
I do. The August 2019 salaries and bills.
What's the item number?
Hold on one second.
Number one, right?
Number one, probably. July 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not even on the agenda. That was just provided to us. The August salaries and bills.
Motion, motion number one is-
It's number one. Number one, this one here.
Number one is the July 2019 and August 2019 salaries.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Number one.
One, okay.
Anything else? Should we vote on number one first, then? Mrs. Rule?
What?
Should we vote on number one first?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, in that case, I move to adopt item number one on the agenda, July 2019, August 2019, salaries and bills.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Keith, I just noticed kind of a large bill, Ohio Electric, a $31,000 bill, and forgive me if I forget something that we may have-
Yeah, it was for the swimming pool, like.
Okay, thank you. Just wanting clarification on that.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion carries as stated. Mr. Christensen?
I move to adopt the remaining 10 items on the Finance Committee, starting with number two, June 2019 financial report, July 2019 financial report, approval of student services contracts, approval of cross-district agreement for special education, acceptance of donation, acceptance of donation, number seven, awarding the bus tire bid, approval for the sale of the district vehicle bid, agreement with the Black Knight Security Incorporated, and items declared unused and unnecessary.
Any questions or comments?
Second.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Roll call. Mr. Carrazzi?
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes. And Mr. Christensen votes yes.
Mr. Christensen, sorry.
Passes as stated. Policy Committee, Mr. Means?
There are two items under policy. The second item is a second of three readings, a policy rescind, and that has to do with Internet applicable use for administrative employees, professional employees, and classified employees. Item number one is a third and final reading, and that is 913 non-school organization groups and individuals. I move item number one be passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion carries as stated. Now, we go to public comments, and would you please state your name and your address, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Steve Huster, 5602 Library Road. First, first, I just want to say, I just want to say, Ms. Rule, thank you for the news about the expansion of the public trust program. I'm really excited about that as well. I think that's great for the district, and I give 100% support for getting more kids involved in that, so I'm excited about that news as well. Secondly, there's been a lot of talk about the June 25th budget, and, you know, I know it's probably time to move on, and this will be the last one, I'll publicly comment on it. But I just want to say, like, I first, I was completely unsatisfied with the six members who voted for it, their explanations at the last meeting, I made that, I sent a very long email to the entire board about that. I regret from none of those six members, which was disappointing to me. And what you guys did was wrong. It was undemocratic. It was, again, such a violation of the public trust. Again, that's been said, and there's absolutely no justification for what you did to make that good of a change to the budget with having no public input, you know, just voting on it. That is completely unacceptable. None of you have answered for that in any way, or given a reasonable explanation for that. And again, honestly, I feel like for that reason alone, I've said this multiple times, the six of you should no longer be serving on this board. And the last thing I'll say, kind of on top of that, that, those feelings just became stronger for me tonight. I 100% agree with what Ms. Dobis said about, you know, Mr. Nagel's request for information, that list seemed completely reasonable to me. I agree with Ms. Dobis that it is absolutely absurd that board members are obstructing the new board from getting that information. And again, the public spoke loud and clear back in May. The public will speak loud and clear again in November. Please get out of the way of the move. Thank you.
Sorry, like, it means 4942 Leila Drive. To see, I know there's 13 houses on my street, one of which is abandoned. Four are senior citizens. Two of those four senior citizens are flabbergasted by tax reduction, lack of research, lack of care for the long-term effects of homelessness. They cannot believe we went backwards. They question the competence of the board members who voted for this. Three houses have no children. They are also concerned in regards to their property values. Five have children. All flabbergasted and upset about such a harebrained vote with no research, and are very concerned about children's education. Three of those are in serious discussion of moving out of this district because they want a district and a board that actually is going to care about the kids. This is one street out of the hundreds in this district. Your mission statement said it, to lead the educational partnership with the community. Do you honestly think you're assamoney vote, not in partnership with the community? Are you really responsible members of society? Why do you still think that people are not looking to move out? Do you still think that families want to move here? People buying houses don't even want to look in Bethel. They look every upper district around Bethel. I'm next, Savannah, 198 Sarah Street, and I really don't know how stupid even we are. Your tax cut in June is going to hurt this district for years to come. And now, you're planning tooth and nail to prevent the preschool board members who are acting in good faith to obtain the information that they need to deal with this tragedy from getting that information, and that is despicable. The need for this information is crucial and urgent. In fact, you should have had it already before you made your vote in June, that you last meeting told us you spent so much time researching and thinking about it. You lit this house on fire, and now you're basically refusing to allow the firefighter crews to access the hydrants, and you're pretending that's a good thing because fire is good. I really am not that stupid, and I'm sorry, it's, I really just don't know when you sleep at night. The voters made a good decision, and I, and I will concede. Thank you, guys. Sharon Dennis, 4314 Hannah Street. Glad that there was a second on the motion to censor. Ken, I put out a petition calling for the immediate resignation of the six board members who voted for the revenue cut, and guess what I got? I got almost 600 seconds on my motion to censure you guys. So the people of the community are on the right side of it. Sad that we're the only ones. I do believe what I said is absolutely correct. The information that they are looking for is what you should have already had when you made your decision to cut the revenue with no plan for the future, how this district is going to manage to keep going with 5.4 million less revenue. It's crazy. It's, 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 I just don't even know what to say anymore. Yeah, so thank you for helping the citizens in the community get some good faith and hope that the school board is actually planning for the future. We appreciate it, because we have children who live here and children who go to school here. We moved our families here to be part of this community, and it's apparently too much trouble for anybody to figure out whether or not we might have to spend a lot of money at a particular school in the next five years while we're in a budget hole. I'm sorry that the needs of our children are inconveniencing the six of you. Thank you.
Captain Cull, 2211 North 35. I don't usually stick off the cuff. I usually prepare my things when I have time, but I just thought it's fantastic what you did tonight because you've proven to everyone that this was not about giving seniors citizens a tax write-off. What you did by not allowing Ken and these other board members to have the information they need to make informed decisions has shown that all you intended to do was screw over the incoming board. I'm just going to read something for you. It's from the Ontario Canadian State Board, or School Board Association. As a member of my local Board of Education representing all the citizens of my school district, I recognize that my fellow board members and I must take the initiative in helping all the people of this community to have all the facts, all the time, about their schools to the end that they will readily provide the finest possible school programs, school staff, and next school facilities. In view of the foregoing considerations, it shall mean my constant endeavor to devote time, thought, and study to the duties and responsibilities of the facilities of the school board members that I may render effective and credible service. Said you don't have the time to do that. It would be a waste of time. Leave. We've spoken. We don't want you here. If you don't want to do your jobs, leave. We don't have to wait until November. Let the new members do what they need to do to get this school back on the footing that we've beyond.
Thomas Jerick, 5460 Glenhill Drive, I don't know if it's a good, against some of you. I think it is disgusting what you did, M.A. I think it is travesty. I also call for your immediate resignation. You should resign. There's no reason why you should be here. And just like when somebody resigned after the election, whenever I was running with Pam Dobus, you let the remaining members select someone to replace you. You need replacement. Your decision is negatively affecting my child. Do you have a child in the district? No, you don't. I'm sorry. Does any of you have a child in the district?
Yes, we do.
Who voted? Who? I have children.
I do have children.
Wait, we need to maintain order.
It is my mistake.
Address the board.
So, you need to live up and let the school board make decisions to help my child in this district and hopefully not affect my downwind home in the future. You guys know what you should do.
Thomas Ray, 2317 North 35. For the six of you that made the vote that affected my son and countless children of the individual city, you have delivered your responsibility. But I ask you to reflect on one thing. In 2007, the board here in Bethel Park adopted the PSBA's code of conduct, and I want you to look at it. It is hanging on that wall. I want you to refresh your minds on that because it clearly states, and I'm going to read for you, that personal decisions should be based on all sufficient facts. I do not believe you have those facts when you made that budget vote. I believe you are preventing Mr. Nagel and three other, or two other board members from obtaining the facts to make those board decisions. So, please, put partisan politics aside and think about the kids for a change. Thank you.
Tom Dewar, 1008 Corrigan Lane. I'm a recent, not too far, product of Bethel Park Club of Schools. Graduated Bethel Park High School in 2013, and I'm sure a teacher you have had run-ins from time to time, parents of bias, taught me one of my strongest lessons: always leave something better than what you have. You know, the six members who voted for that budget cut, you guys have been on the board for quite some time. I would not have been able to make my way through the school district if you guys had not been doing some semblance of your job. And I appreciate your public service during that time, but any good faith and any good policy that you enacted during your time on the board is wiped out when you pass that budget cut. It is irresponsible to think that that is going to help any aspect of this community. We need public officials, local elected officials, to stand up and fight for the people they were elected to represent, and you all disgraced that oath you took when you decided to run for public office. We deserve better in Bethel Park from all of our municipal elected officials, and this November, we have a serious chance to continue that trend that we started this May. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. I don't know how you sleep at night, and this November, we're to continue the work that we started this May and making sure we move Bethel Park forward.
Daniel Ford, 1527 Jared Street. So, I, my comments are going to be a little bit different, and I'll only point it here clearly. I'm very disappointed.
Very disappointed. And the name-calling and the disrespect and the disregard because people do not know how to agree to disagree. The reasoning behind someone's decision needs to be taken into account, but both sides need to be heard. But the things that I'm hearing, the kids that I deal with that are Bethel Park students on a regular basis, the kids are watching how we conduct ourselves. It's not just the school board, it's all of us as citizens. So, we have to be careful and mindful of what we put out there in the atmosphere. I hear name-calling, people calling each other idiots, and being highly disrespectful. What happened to treating each other the way we want to be treated? My issue, whatever you all have to say about, like, all the shady six and all, that's highly disrespectful because pretty soon, somebody else is going to be sitting up here, and what goes around, comes around. See, my family's been here since 1927. My family is the Richardson family. So, everybody who's just moving in here, you don't realize what it means to be great neighbors and to care about one another and to do things to effectuate positive change in our community. Calling names, being disrespectful does not help, and those are my, my word of encouragement to you all is take a look in the mirror and make sure that you are leaving a legacy that you want your children to follow because name-calling and being disrespectful is not okay.
Any other comments?
Heather Lodge, 5843 Irish Town Road. Early in the meeting, when it was being argued down about Mr. Nagel's request to have an amendment made, a comment was made that this is a problem for the new board. This is something for the new board to consider.
I didn't say it was a problem, sorry.
Problem is my word. I'm sorry for paraphrasing, but that this was a concern for the new board. With all due respect, you're our board today. You're the one who's supposed to be looking out for our students today. This is a thing for you to take care of. You're not just going to let the clock run out. It's your job to pass the baton on, not to just drop it because, oh, well, you're not going to finish the race, so why should you help someone else?
I would just like to correct you.
Ken Crowley, 2020 Millennium Court. Mrs. Rule, you are correct. It does take time for this information to be prepared. That is why Mr. Nagel has been asking for it for well over a year. These are questions that are asked by boards across the state. These are not questions that just Mr. Nagel is asking, but board members are across the state. They are questions that senior district leaders are prepared to answer on a daily basis. They don't need to hire an outside firm to answer these questions because they pay the people that they trust to be experts. So, when they ask the director of facilities a facilities question, they trust that that person can do without consulting an outside firm. Just like if you ask a curriculum question, you don't need to hire an outside company to answer that curriculum question because you've trusted Mrs. Wells, who is a great professional, to be able to answer those questions. So, give them time to get that message prepared. But if you're saying you want it for the new board and it takes time, the new board's coming in December, so we need to have maybe in October, vote on it and have this information prepared so that the senior administration is not scrambling on November 30th to get this information prepared for the December meeting. The original reason why I came to talk is months ago, you guys listened to me and my concerns about there being extended day at all elementary schools for kindergarten students. Lincoln was one of those schools where extended day was not afforded to those students. You worked with Lois Johnson to get that agreement in place. I'm sad to say, it's basically just something on paper. They are unable to accommodate Lincoln's students. They are not able to transport Lincoln's students, from what I've been told, to the facility. I've arranged other means of childcare for my kindergarten student at Lincoln because unless I could get the district to transport her to the Center on Franklin, which the board won't approve, she's unable to attend extended day that is being offered through the district. Thank you.
Anymore? Any other comments? If not, we'll go to board comments. Any board comments, starting with Pam?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Buckley. She needs to stick off. Go ahead, Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I interrupted someone. There's two things that I have to reiterate because I've said it publicly several times because some of them, I'm speaking in English that is not being heard. I will one day, and say, and I'll speak only for myself, that's the way rules are, and I follow the rules. I do not have any biological children in this district. That's the thing. My preach is that gratification and very proud of the fact that we're all successful. Which my point being, that if you know me something, you will believe this statement because it is the truth. I have over 4,000 children in this district, and I'm not responsible for the children who attend Memorial. I'm not responsible for children who are in a certain program, I am S or a math class with AIGL. I personally take it as my full responsibility to be responsible for over 4,000 children. You can sit there and shake your head and sit there and touch the right, but I speak it truth. Number two, I have fear clear of losing this word, but I think it's time to do it. My vote was asked for truthless, not to lose. And I'll reiterate the story that I've said before. At the last election, couple of years ago, a gentleman questioned my husband about couples, and I walked up and I said, "Do you see that? Are you, you have a question?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Yes." "Do you have a D or an R?" And I tried looking up, and I explained, we crossed lines, I pointed my most right ear out, "No." He said, "No. Do you have a D or an R?" And I responded, "Well, I agree." He said, "Sir, if you want to put a letter after my name, put a D or a A." He looked at me and compared, "What exactly?" I said, "I'm here for children, for kids, whatever letter you wish to speak." He said, "Well, I can't vote for you if you won't tell me D or N." I said, "Well, I'd love your choice." And number three, on a hundredth vote, I respect quite a day all the people who attend this night's meeting, and I wish you all a safe and happy Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley. Mrs. Dobus.
Just a little lesson from a former English teacher about logical fallacies. Blame shifting happens when a person who does something wrong or inappropriate dumps the blame on someone else to avoid taking that responsibility. And for those of you who are here on the sixth, you heard five directors defending their vote to reduce the millage and deplete the reserves by shifting the blame and defending their political histories and stories. So, instead of explaining how this was fiscally responsible, the blame was allocated in various ways. The first blame was given to the nefarious unions for the things that they do. So, instead of taking responsibility, the unions were blamed. The second, the second group that was blamed were the three of us. We were blamed for the vote because of what we might do in the future, as if any of us has a looking glass into the future. Then, the blame also fell on all of you who are angry because you are angry and you've used social media to convey that anger. Now, I do agree with what Ms. Ford said. I hope that the anger can be not so negative, but the most interesting blame that was allocated was to the school board president when somebody said, "Well, when I was thinking about it, I called Donna." That was like the most surprising to me whatsoever of who was being blamed for these things. And also, it was claimed that individually and in isolation, they each researched and studied this choice. Unfortunately, some of us weren't privy to any of that information, and they didn't think it was necessary to have public discussions about that. So, they are, the six of them are very surprised at the anger and the invective that their actions released. But I'm also angry because for six years, I've listened to the rhetoric about the importance of maintaining a healthy fund balance. Ever since I've been on the board, I have been preached about that importance of maintaining the healthy fund balance and the fiscal responsibility. What surprises me is the sense of, you know, the naive aspect that these directors, they shattered their political legacy with this vote. I respect their years of service. I respect their accomplishments. I don't understand why some of them agreed to this clearly political move that ignored the advice that they've been giving me for six years. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Means.
You going on?
I was just going down the line.
Okay.
Yeah, I gave the reason I voted for the budget cut on the sixth, and I can reiterate that very, very succinctly. Everything being equal, I would probably rather have the fund balance than not have the fund balance. However, it became very apparent that fund balance is going to be spent. It's going to be spent on staff. It's going to be spent on teachers that we don't need. We're already overstaffed compared to all the surrounding school districts. Mr. Wells in the back even verified that, made a statement in the paper that they wanted to use the fund balance for increasing staff and faculty. No. So, you were quoted in the paper. If you were misquoted, call the Post Gazette and complain to them. We have a large... What's that?
Mr. Means. It's your opportunity, Mr. Means.
We had a large fund balance, and I knew we could cut the millage rate and sustain the programs through the time it would take to make the millage rate back up. Real quick, I'll do the math. We cut the millage rate approximately 1.8 mils. The total assessment in Bethel Park is 2.5 billion. In the past, historically, we've been allowed to raise the millage rate about six tenths of a mil. Six tenths of a mil times 2.5 billion means roughly $1.5 million a year we can raise a budget. So, we can raise that, raise that funding back in three years. It would give us a deficit of 4.5 million the first year, 3 million the second, and 1.5 the third. Take a total of $9 million out of the fund balance. Now, we'd already budgeted almost a million, so when you work through all that, it works out to actually be about 13 million. At the time, at the end of that period of time, we'll have about $6 million in the fund balance. That's about what Upper Sinclair has in their fund balance right now. So, yes, I made that vote. No, I'm not surprised people are angry. If I had that same vote to come up again tonight, I would vote exactly the same way. Buzz, I have a question for you. Were the comments that Dave Amadets and I put into the minutes, are they going to be put into the minutes? Okay, so my comments will be available in a minute. You can take a look at them. Mr. Huster had made the comment that nobody had responded. Actually, we all gave our reasons we voted for it last time. Actually, we all gave our reasons we voted for it last time. Nothing has been cut from the budget. No programs have been cut. Nothing has been cut from the budget this year. We have been running a surplus for the last several years. I don't know if you're aware of it. We had a $4 million surplus last year that was put back into the capital reserve fund. We have more than one fund balance. We have the fund balance, the general fund balance. We have the capital reserve fund balance. We also have money set aside for Chromebooks and things like that. Even at the conclusion of all this, after the three years workout, we will still have a fund balance that is very favorable compared to other school districts. Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
Yes, I guess just one, I think important, some important numbers to factor into that forecast is that our costs have been increasing over the last couple of years. I think the budget we approved this year was 89 million. And the year, last year, I think it was 86. And the year before that, it was around 83, I believe. The budget has been increasing. So if you assume that expenses are not going to increase and budget's not going to increase, maybe you would recover it in three. It's actually going to be four. It's three plus some decimals. So that's the risk. Also, the risk, which would have been great to have some analysis in the front, is we set aside a fund balance because of some risks, some budgeting risks, expense risks. And we never really went in and said, "Do those risks still exist?" So that's premature. So yeah, I think it's still an incredibly bad decision, but the decision's made. So now, we do have to think about the long term and moving forward. And I would say, you know, during my first term on the board, one thing, if we're going to go back and rate ourselves, myself, is that we spend very little time doing probably one of the most important things that a board should do, and that's thinking long term. We spend almost no time talking about next year, the year after that, five years, 10 years. What do we want to invest in for the long term? What do we want Bethel Park to be in the long term? And many of those initiatives take multiple years. You have to plant a seed in five years, 10 years down the road, you start to see the benefit. We never talk about that kind of stuff. And what Mr. Nagel's asking for, I think, is the beginning of that. We have to get an understanding of what our long-term costs are, what we need to invest in. I think that, you know, with the fund balance that we've had, we've maybe been a little bit sloppy in some of our budgeting because we could be. But now, as your fund balance declines, you have to be more disciplined in it because you may have some surprises that you have to account for. So with what Mr. Nagel's asking for, I believe it's completely responsible in asking for that and starting to develop a better financial acumen within the board, a better visibility of what our expenses are going to be over the long term. And as Mrs. Dobis said, there'll be lots more questions. But if you look at what some of the other boards are doing, in fact, you go to Erie. I looked at a number of different boards. They have extremely detailed facilities plans and extremely detailed strategic plans or comprehensive plans, which, you know, by the way, we voted on that, what, four years ago, and we've never looked at it since. Is there any value in doing that? You know, and so these are some of the changes that I hope in December we start focusing on, becoming more long-term focused. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank everybody being here. It's good to have input and see people and all that instead of some of the meetings where we only have three people. Second, I want to thank the people for donating all the money that we heard. I won't go into details, we heard all that and all the accomplishments. We're going to see a lot more next month and months after, being that this was the first month. It was very short, so Mrs. Wells will be going horse after she starts giving the next report and on forth. The other thing I wanted to comment on was yesterday there was a school safety meeting at IMS that I and Mr. Nagel attended. I don't know if anybody else did, but I know you and I were there. It was a very good meeting. It was where I came out of there feeling a lot better about the safety and a lot more confidence in our program. The principal, high school principal, Dr. Jay, he even said that we, as Bethel Park, for the security process was very impressive. At the meeting, it was, started at 7:00, ended about 8:45, and there was a bunch of, all the principals, the superintendent, and all the school police resource officers were there. And not going into any details, but the one big thing is our kids did get, are getting a lot of benefits from this. It's not just for school safety. It could be anywhere. The rules that we were hearing or the processes and the drills and all that can be applied everywhere. So the only bad thing is it cannot be televised, but there should be some summary report, like some school districts have, a little summary as to what a parent should expect. So, you know, look into that and see what you should expect. If there is a serious situation, who do you contact, where do you go? There's rally points, reunification points, things like that. Because it was mentioned about the vote, I will then take the liberty to read a quick, yeah, sort of quick, my description to answer people's questions as to why I voted the way I did. Being on the board, being on the school board for four years has been an extremely educational journey. I have also learned so much from so many people and developed such a great appreciation for challenges that one faces doing this service. I have learned that my service has to include everybody in our community and that all aspects of growth, development, safety, sustainability must always be included. We worked hard as a board to get a good teacher contract that both sides were happy to sign. Thus, I always voted in favor of following the teacher contract agreement, like when it says that 25 students per classroom was practical and in rare cases where it may be exceeded by a student or two, a stipend was granted. But now, there are some people in our community who believe that we must reduce the number even lower to something like 15 to 20. We heard that at their last meet. There are studies on both sides of the street that reject or support this notion. When I was campaigning in May, I had talked to many people. The one concern expressed repeatedly was that it was not enough that we had run the school district in a fiscally responsible manner for four years with no tax increases, while at the same time voting in favor of curriculum, growth, safety, infrastructure, et cetera, they still paid too much in school tax. When we look at our neighbor, Upper St. Clair and others here, that has close to the same number of students and a much more affluent area to whom we are always compared, our budget and reserve funds were much higher by millions of dollars. I have been asked if I still had any children attending school, would I have voted differently? I strongly assure you that my votes would be the same even if my children were in the system. And just like Mrs. Buckley said, all the children are our children, really. I always acted for what was best for the students and community. I always voted in favor of curriculum improvements like Wonders, Chromebooks for all students, Alex, costly internet upgrades, and proposed curriculum classes as long as it had the minimum number of students and make it effective, and et cetera. In addition to curriculum improvements, I voted in favor of full bus service for all students, cameras for the school buses, facilities upgrade, school police, and many, many more. During my term, this board was able to establish an impressive fund balance, or fund surplus, which still fulfilling the needs of every Bethel Park student. We currently have a general fund balance of $21.64 million and a capital reserve fund of $11.531 million, giving us a total of over $33 million, more than our neighboring school districts. So after campaigning, I asked her president if doing an actual cut was doable, and she said that I would have to hold out the finance items for such move. This did not in any way cut any of the budget items that were previously scrutinized and deemed student-worthy. The entire budget remained intact with my vote. Also, Education Research Center, 2019, publishes the cost per pupil spending for each state and shows that while the national average is $12,756 per pupil, Vermont has the highest per pupil expenditure in the nation at $20,540. Our cost here in Bethel Park, when making the budget and factoring in that we only have 4,044 students, or 4,044 students, is a whopping $21,513 per student, if you do the math. And all our teachers are some of the highest paid in the nation. That's great, you know, but the fact is they are highest paid. So that's, I'm not saying that's bad, but I'm just saying that we're not underfunding anything here. It is sad to see that there are some people on social media filled with so much hate that they are calling board members that voted for helping taxpayers spiteful, thoughtless, self-serving, despicable, mean-spirited, attempt to sabotage the future, and even worse. This hate is deplorable. They have been making false claims that the bottom was cut off from under the school. This is just not true. Total enrollment has again dropped from May going into June of this year. Assessed property values is continually going up. The PISers and the healthcare rates have greatly slowed down to more reasonable increases. The state has increased its contribution by 3% and more funding is in the work for security. And we still have a student-teacher ratio that can be improved. So it is my hope that the incoming board will continue this board's practice of being fiscally responsible by thoroughly researching all aspects before voting. In this way, the entire curriculum growth and ongoing excellence of Bethel Park School District can be sustained. I have been honored to serve on this Bethel Park School Board and will continue to serve through my term by standing up for the hard-working students and citizens. I'd like to thank the many taxpayers that personally thank me for taking the initiative to give them this one-time tax cut proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Nagel?
Well, first of all, I'd like to address one of those comments. The idea of thoroughly researching all votes and proposals. That's kind of what you voted down today, is my ability to thoroughly research any votes and proposals. Second point is a one-time tax refund that carries over four years or better. And the, I believe it was the auditor's report said that, either that or the AIU, said that one mil of tax decrease takes two mils of tax increase just to get back to level. But I really was trying to avoid discussing the budget directly. I did want to say, you know, I am outraged, I'm outraged about that. I'm outraged about not being able to get the information. I have been trying very hard to focus my outrage on the actions and not the individuals. Tonight, Mrs. Ford, you're correct. I apologize to you, Mrs. Roll, for cutting you off and letting my temper get the better of me. We are supposed to set an example. And I don't see a problem with setting an example of having that outrage and fighting for our students. But we need to keep it focused on fighting forward. We don't need to continue to focus on what's happened in the past. It does no good for us. It does no good for our students. It does no good for our district. So I'm going to continue fighting, and I'll end with what I ended with in the email I originally sent on July 30th, that I am committed to ensuring our district provides all students the top-quality education that they deserve and that taxpayers expect. And I will work tirelessly with anyone who shares that goal. I will overcome all obstacles that attempt to distract or otherwise prevent us from achieving that goal. I'm committed to that, and I'll keep fighting forward. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I voted to reduce the taxes because I've been here through many of our tax struggles. I understand very well. I feel almost like a survivor, like I solely, even though it took nine board members, got you to the 20 million. Because I've been on the board when we were $2 million in debt. I was on when we gave the last tax rebate. And I would have not voted to give that tax rebate had we given it the same way we did the last time. We actually got checks back to everybody. We depleted our fund balance. This time, we did not. They got it in the form of next year, they were getting a credit this year, next year's taxes. We kept that money in, or we did not reduce any expenditures. And we have a couple of new big developments right now in Bethel Park that's coming onto the tax rolls. Those will go into our coffers. We also will have some retirements. We will not be $5 million less next year. We will have income. I've been around long enough to see it come. It will come, and we will not have to cut anything. We do have, like many schools have, a fund balance. But they put their computers in that fund balance. They also put any capital expenses in. We don't. We have separate accounts for those. Our fund balance is clear, the money that we have to work with. We are very fortunate, and we are very fortunate to be like our neighboring schools. And I think that we will be back in no time, and our children are not going to suffer. And to say that we don't care about their children, I have grandchildren in this school. And you don't think that grandparents even think a little more about their grandchildren than maybe their own children when they were coming up? I watched them like a hawk to make sure that we are doing what we need to do for our children. I've spent more time in these schools in the last seven years than I did when my kids were in school. So we do worry about them, and we're not going to short them anything. And yes, our expenses are much higher than our neighboring district. And I know, I sit with 42 school districts. I can tell you how they're positioned, and I can tell you where their money is hidden and where it isn't. And I can tell you which one of our neighboring schools is in for a real big problem next year. You haven't seen a word about it. But Bethel Park puts it all on social media, puts it all in the paper. We make the TV. That does not help our community at all. I've had people say, "I wouldn't put a thing on your site. You have a terrible, mean community. I wouldn't live there. What's wrong with your people?" I never had that in Bethel Park. The last two years, I don't know what's happened. I don't know if it's the people that's moved in, they have a different value system, but they are hurting, which are hurting us by putting bad things on social media. And we should be working together. That's what we want. And it's the only way we're going to accomplish the good things that our kids can have. Because they do have a lot, and there's a lot more for them to get. I just know that all the development, everything coming along, we will be okay. There's not a problem. The other thing is I want to congratulate IMS. That was the smoothest, handing out computers and taking them in. I think they're a role model for our district. Maybe all the other schools should watch it. They get those students in and out with no problems. And I think that Mr. Minchin, his staff needs to be commended. And I thank you. And I thank all of you for listening to us. We're glad to hear your side of it. We hope that you have been able to understand where we were coming from. If you have any questions, please come and see us. Thank you for attending.
Mrs. Roll?
Dr. Pasquale?
I'd like to add one more thing, if you would indulge me. Some people have tried to portray this as an effort to get money back to senior citizens. And I think sometimes talking about a senior citizen struggling to make ends meet makes the example. And I'm speaking for me, but I think the other five who voted for this tax decrease would agree. It's not about tax decrease, getting money back only to seniors because there's a lot of young families struggling and trying to make ends meet. A number of years ago, I was out collecting signatures for something, and a young woman told me, she says, "I love Bethel. I have to move out. The taxes are too high." I hear stories of bus drivers buying kids coats, gloves, hats. And quite frankly, some of the times that Dr. Pasquale calls us school in the cold days and everybody gets upset about it is not everybody comes to school well-dressed. So people have been saying, "Well, $360, you know, what difference does that make?" Well, it could mean a coat for a kid in the wintertime. So it's not just about seniors. It's about reducing the cost of education for taxpayers. And the other thing is, our budget has gone up significantly. But if you look at our actual cost, what we've actually spent in the past number of years, it hasn't been going up that much. Our income has actually been increasing faster than our cost. That's it.
I have one more comment then. If you indulged him, would you indulge me, please? It just surprises me that the six of you that voted for this don't get it. You don't get that it's not about decreasing taxes. It's about the way you did it. It's only about the way you did it. I'm for decreasing taxes. Show me how to, show me the whole, all the statistics and everything about it, and I would, I would... But you didn't offer us that opportunity. You didn't offer them that opportunity. You don't get it. You're defending these actions like, "Oh, we can afford it, we can afford it." Well, maybe we can, but do you know how you did it? The way you did it was wrong.
Mrs. Dobis, Mrs. Dobis, I was surprised about that vote. I was surprised about that vote, but I was able to keep my head, not get panicky, and think about what they were saying, because every member here had an opportunity to say, "I want to amend that motion." Not one person did.
We did try to amend that.
You could have amended it. Yes, you could have. You could have amended that motion.
Oh, that, you amended it. You guys amended, you amended the one.
You could have amended the amendment. I'm just saying, the opportunity was there, and then you could have discussed it fully. That's all I'm saying, is that everybody had an opportunity to speak up.
We discussed it pretty fully that day when the amendment was made. We didn't need to amend the amendment in order to discuss it.
Yeah, and I think sometimes when we get up, that, I mean, that happens to all of us. You know, we're not thinking about procedures.
Don't blame me for being upset.
You know, but anyway.
Can I make one statement? I typically, okay, so, just going to shift gears a second. I have to say, as a...
What? I miss all this fun?
Right, I'm going to shift gears for one moment. I'm not saying that that's an important issue, but one thing I've really been impressed with this year, and maybe, you know, I was joking, I don't know if that's a true saying or not about knocking on wood, but I think we're really off to a good start this school year, and not just, I appreciate you mentioning IMS, but I think just over everywhere in the district. I've looked out, I'd like to thank the teaching staff in particular for preparing their rooms. There's some beautiful rooms out there that your children are going to. I think that they're working really hard, and we've got off to a really solid start. I'd like to thank our administration over there and the work that they put in this summer and putting everything together, too, for the safety night so that we can get that out. And I think, as I say at the safety meeting all the time, which I think is true of the district, you're never done, but you can keep working forward, and you can celebrate some success. Thank you, Mr. Keith, and the facilities. We got an email, I think it was from one of the elementary schools in particular, about how clean the building was this year. Working hard to making sure that we're going to make the final tweaks, but the air conditioning is up and running at the high school, and yes, we have a little bit more work to do on it, but overall, it was able to be cool for our students to come, and hopefully, after those final tweaks, it's going to be a positive thing. I also want to, you know, thank the idea that we have some grant opportunities, the PA Smart Grant, that's an opportunity that Ms. Wells and Mr. Patterson, some others, are working on. Like to thank, you know, Mrs. O'Rourke, who is working right now and attending some things about our comprehensive plan. So, I thank Ms. Sutton and her ability to continue to extend, and I don't know if many people got that, we talked about it in the meeting, but to reiterate the fact that we've increased our mental health in addition to our safety, right? We have an additional social worker at our elementary schools, which I think is positive. It's got a good vibe this year, and I understand that there might be some issues, but I would just say, from my personal perspective as a superintendent of schools, walking through the, all the buildings, at least on day one, sure, there's some issues that still need taken care of, and we can always improve, but I've been impressed by the body of work of everybody coming together and what we're doing. And I think sometimes, you know, yes, we have to tackle difficult issues, but it's also important to validate what's really going on. So, thanks to the teaching staff, thanks to the administration, thanks to the paraprofessionals, thanks to custodians and IT department and every single person, secretaries, right on down the line. I wish I had the list to make sure I didn't miss anybody, but if I missed you, it's out there for you, too. And I think we have to really look at all of our departments only and leadership, at the people underneath of them, and say, "What are we doing well, too?" I mean, a lot of us are going to continue working, whether we get that validation or we don't get that validation, but it never hurts. It always makes you feel better when you validate. So, we've got a great community. As I've always said, I'm humbled and fortunate to be the leader of this school system, and I just want to thank everybody for that, and I invite you to see the positive things going on in the Bethel Park School District, and, you know, Teachers Union that's represented here, Mr. Wells, too, thank you for working with us throughout the course of this year and preparing, and your staff. Be sure to share that with them, that we appreciate our working relationship that seems to me is on improvement as compared to where it may have been years and years ago. We don't have a strike. We have a contract, and it's beyond that. We're working through issues. Nothing's perfect. But I'd like to thank everybody who's helped to get this year off to be a positive start, and I believe that it was. Cafeteria staff, et cetera, et cetera. So, just know that we're going to continue to work. We've got a lot of great things going on, a lot of things in Bethel Park going in the right direction, a lot of room to grow. So, thanks to everyone, thanks to the board, thanks to the community, and we'll continue to do the very best we can for the children, and it's going to be an exciting school year. Go Hawks.
And I want to thank the two policemen that helped us out tonight also. Thank you for coming. Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Pam?[1773.03]